... Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, Board of Education meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So I'll give you just a very brief overview and then answer any specific questions you have. There's only four parts to this bid package. One is the network switching equipment which kind of simply ties all the devices on the network together and also allows the students and staff to get out to the Internet and to other resources on the network. There's six wiring closets in the building where these switches will reside. As part of the architectural design, there's already power, cooling, and other accessories needed to support the equipment. This is the actual electronics that's going to really drive the network within the building. Second part of it is the wireless networking equipment. Pretty sure we're all familiar with wireless equipment. It's going to allow the students and staff to use their laptops, iPads, tablets, and other devices over the wireless network throughout the building. Third component is the phone system. The phone system in the current high school is well beyond its useful life. It's not even manufactured anymore. So the new system will support the new school for current as well as future needs. Then finally, the last piece that is really more miscellaneous equipment, things like patch cords and wires and all the consumables needed to make it all work together.
Essentially, this all focuses on the infrastructure of the new building. It is the system that will allow our building to be a robust, essentially wireless environment for our students and staff to work in.
And the building committee has approved, reviewed this bid proposal?
It's on their agenda for this evening.
Bill Mulligan has been...
Bill Mulligan worked with us as we put it together, so...
Okay, so we're optimistic that they would also concur with this?
Yes.
Yeah, we've gone through several, over the last six weeks or so, we've had about four or five meetings with Kevin and his staff, as well as Bill Mulligan. Pam Millman's reviewing it for the legality portion of it. So it's been vetted several times. We're at a stage now where we just need state approval and then we'll issue it for bid shortly.
The building committee thought it appropriate for Bo to be here with you tonight, thinking that you might have more questions than they would. I think at this time that this is going to move fairly quickly through the building committee. I think in a sense, because it is so much more complicated and esoteric, it is an easier decision at the committee level than the FFNE. There was lots of discreet pieces of furniture and everybody has an interest in furniture and how it's going to work. This really is an area of special expertise and is a little more esoteric than the general population, I believe.
I'm very comfortable with this bid document that we've put together, too. We've also left several options for different scenarios that we will decide upon once the bids come in. For example, we have the phone system. We've also asked that they give us a cloud solution as well as an on-premise solution. So we're going to get a lot more information, too, from the bids once they come in and then make further decisions from there.
Okay. Got a question.
Dr. Moore? Yeah. I know this is not part of this bid, but can you just refresh my memory, the actual purchase of computers for the new high school? Where is that falling?
Yeah, we have had this conversation at the building committee level. This purchase is primarily infrastructure. The building committee is not focusing on bringing in new user stations into the high schools. So we're looking on building a robust wireless environment and continuing to provide user stations either through encouraging the "bring your own device" approach to schooling or continuing with the lease program that Mr. Mitchell instituted a number of years ago, where we're continuing to purchase and bring in laptop and Chromebook and tablet stations that students interface with at school. There was some significant conversation about the idea of should the dollars in this budget go to purchase user stations or infrastructure? It is state reimbursable. So any money spent on this project is going to receive our state reimbursement of approximately 30 percent. To purchase the user stations, however, they're going to have a shorter lifetime than the infrastructure would have. And since we have a really healthy lease process and replacement calendar in place now, it made more sense to take the limited funds of the building committee and make sure we were purchasing the most robust infrastructure that we could purchase, also fully reimbursable at the state level.
The other piece, too, is these are mandatory items. Without this equipment, you can't run a user station. So we need this first, and that's the way we're going to spend those dollars.
Yes, Kevin, can I ask you, I mean, are you comfortable with the actual hardware and technology that we'll have available to the students?
Yes, I am. As long as we keep funding it at the levels that I've suggested, I think we can do very well with those dollars.
Other question?
I have one, since I don't understand any of this. I'd like to be comfortable that you do. So can you tell us a little bit about yourself? And you're a subcontractor for Ty Sukim, is that correct?
Sure. I'm with Kohler Ronan. We're the MEP, Fire Protection and Technology Designers for the high school project. Been doing technology design since about 1990 or so. We do a lot of K-12 work.
Thank you.
Most recently, we did a similar bid package for the American School for the Deaf in West Hartford. We're doing some work right now with Stratford Schools, as well as some other schools around the state, as well as out of state, New York City, Boston, and some other places. I'm not trying to detail what I want you to get.
Were there any particular challenges in the Guilford High School project, or is this pretty routine?
I would say for the most part, pretty routine. You know, I think in terms of the infrastructure that we built, we, you know, Kevin and I have worked together for about a year and a half on this. I think we've been very careful to make sure that what we're putting in provides the redundancy and the throughput that the school's going to need, not just for 2014, but looking out three, four, five, seven years. You know, for example, some of the technology that links all the different closets together, we're going with a very high-speed type of link. Will that bandwidth be needed day one? Maybe not, but three or four years from now, most definitely it's going to be needed. So we're trying to build it with an eye towards the future, you know, and trying to build in all the features that the school's going to need.
Can you give us a real general idea of the range of the cost of this section of the project?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So the four categories I talked about, we have the network switches, we have the wireless network, we have the phone system, and then the infrastructure components at the end. Very rough numbers. The network switches are roughly about $250,000, and that includes not only the hardware, but also the professional services to the installation, the configuration, and all the testing at the end. Likewise, with the wireless equipment, rough number is about $175,000, again, including both hardware and services. The phone system is budgeted at about $79,000, and the final category, the infrastructure, is about $31,500.
Okay, so half a million-ish.
It adds up to 535,500, yeah.
Is that consistent with what the original forecasts were in the budget?
In terms of hardware, it's very, very close, with I think about $10,000 from the original budget. At the time that we did the initial budget, we had included professional services that were estimating roughly $75,000, $80,000, $85,000 across all the different environments. What we're hoping, and again, this is one of the options that Kevin was referring to, we've broken the bid document into four different sections where the bidders can bid on one section if that's their area of expertise. If we have an integrator who's comfortable and is certified in the networking, the wireless, and the voice component, we're encouraging them to bid for all the packages, obviously to get the efficiencies and the cost benefits of doing that.
Okay. Any other questions? Question? All right, then, is there a motion that we approve this bid package?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, thank you very much. We look forward to getting the results back. And let me sign whatever it is I'm supposed to sign. And vote in at the next meeting. Okay, let's go back to the regular agenda. Item three is action on the minutes of September 8, 2014, and the workshop meeting of September 22nd. Is there, first of all, a motion on September 8?
So moved. Second.
Okay, changes, corrections, additions, clarifications?
Go ahead.
One small correction on page five. One, two, three, four, five sentences or paragraphs down. I am cited as making a suggestion that really should be attributed to Dr. Myers, who made the wonderful suggestion listed there.
Yep.
And I had a couple of very minor ones, too, on item 3.1, the September 8 minutes. Section 3.3, I did not second that motion. I wasn't in attendance at that meeting, so I couldn't have done it. I think it might have been Mr. Sands.
I'm sorry, which one is it?
It was the special meeting. There was a...
Yeah, it would have had to have been either...
At the end of August.
No, that's correct. It would have had to have been Mr. Sands.
Yeah.
Since I wouldn't have done it, so...
Yes.
We were the only three that could do it, so, okay.
And then the very next line, the reviewer of the month, I can't take credit for that either. That was Chairman Vloss.
Yep.
So I guess I didn't know he'd do anything.
Why? Well, but you would have.
Would have, right.
Okay. All right, any other corrections or clarifications? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then September 22nd, workshop meeting? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item four on the agenda, Dr. Myers, you reviewed the expenditures, I'm sure, in the operations committee meeting?
I did. The expenditures for the month of September were $4,272,080 and 13 cents. That combined with encumbrance through the end of September is 16.45 percent of the budget, which is a little bit higher than it was last year at this time of 16.02. The reason is we have increased expenses in legal because we're currently negotiating three contracts with three separate unions, and we have a lawyer helping us. And B, we have spent roughly $90,000 in improvements for all-day kindergarten in three different rooms, four different rooms, more than four rooms, in the elementary school, in four different elementary schools. So that was an expense that did not exist a year ago. Otherwise, we're really on track. There were no surprises, no real issues as we went over all of the bills. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, comments? Then is there any motion to approve the expenditures for the month of September?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item five on the agenda is public forum for topics on the board agenda. Anybody? No? Okay. Six communications. I did get a... Did everybody get the email, the letter asking for a representative to the Agricultural Magnet School up in Middletown? They're... Oh, okay. All right, I'll send that out. All right, I'll send that out. They are looking for, Mr. Bishop, actually, the vice chairman emeritus, is serving on that board, and they are looking for a second representative from Guilford. And I don't think it has to be a board member, a board of ed member here, but I'll scan that and send it around then. And if you either know somebody, and it seems to me we maybe ought to send it to the Agricultural Society and see if they have somebody that they might want to recommend.
If you could forward it to me as well, I'd be happy to forward it.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that. Okay. Any other communications?
I had a question from a parent of a sophomore about PSATs. They were questioning that other schools in the area pay for the PSAT and do it during school time, and that Guilford does it on a Saturday and charges a fee. So they were...
Can you comment on that, or...
I was not contacted on that communication. I'd be happy to follow up. And I would have to defer to Mr. Masenti and the high school team for the background, and then I'd be happy to talk to any individual who's concerned about.
Okay. Yep.
I can tell you the amount is $26,000.
Yes, I heard that. [laughter]
How do you know? Okay, if you can just maybe forward that to Dr. Freeman and act accordingly. All right, any other communications at this point? There may be some later. Okay. I see we have some student representatives, a lot of student representatives. Who is going to be introducing them? I got to ask Mrs. Chaff to do that again. Okay.
Hello again. On behalf of Mr. Masenti and Guilford High School, I am pleased to present this year's student representatives to you. I think you'll recognize a familiar face in Catherine Rosadini. She served last year and is starting her senior year and will be serving again. Next to her is Greg Sullivan. He's a sophomore. Next to Greg is Mark Sejournay, and I'm being very brief because I actually am going to ask them to tell you a little bit about themselves in just a moment. Mark is currently in his 11th grade year. And then another senior representative next to Mark is Joe Iasonia, also beginning his senior year. So I'm going to let Catherine start us off. She has seniority here. And she's going to give you a quick update on, about herself, and then, I guess, give your report, Catherine, and you can turn it over to Greg.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for having me again. Senior year has been very hectic, but very fun at the same time, and I'm trudging along in my senior process of applying, but I'm almost there. So I actually spoke to Mr. Augustine again, who I talked to last year from AW Cox, and he told me that their new playground has been installed, and everyone in the school and in the community absolutely loves it. And there's also, there's a video online, actually, that shows and talks about it. Then the fourth graders won their first place for their float at the Guilford Fair Parade, and Hailey Hutchinson came in second at the GFFE spelling bee. And then staff has been participating in professional development with Isabel Beck's book, Bringing Words to Life. And they are looking forward to parent teacher conferences next week and a parent forum on the Common Core State Standards on October 30th.
Hello again. I'm Greg Sullivan. I'd like to thank you for having me here. I contacted Ms. Resnick of Moosa Jones School, and they would like to announce that they just launched the Moosa Jones School TV News, which is run by our students, and they have a daily broadcast from happy birthday wishes, weather, recess plans, vocabulary word for the week, and with occasional guests and other announcements. And they are getting ready for their Halloween carnival, which will, all funds will support the updates and additions to their playground. And they also have photo day and parent teacher conferences coming up soon. Oh, and also about me, sorry for that. I'm a sophomore, and sophomore year has been going well so far. It's a lot different from freshman year, but it's obviously not as hard as senior year. freshman year, but it's obviously not as hard as senior year. And then I've been on the soccer team, which we've been doing very well this season, and our season should be wrapping up in a few weeks.
I'm Mark. Thank you for having me here. I'm a junior, and junior year's been going pretty well. Again, it's definitely different from my last few years, but it is, it's exciting just to be back and to be back in the swing of things. And I'll be reporting on Guilford Lakes Elementary School. They've had a great start to the school year. Students and teachers are well underway with the important work that they have to be doing. As a school community, they just lost, they just launched their Fill the Bucket program, which is a program which focuses on building community through positive acts of kindness. So that's just one of the exciting things going on there. And the News Eight Weather Van recently visited the kindergarten classes, so they got to see how meteorologists kind of just do their jobs and how the weather really works, I guess. And also, last week was Fire Prevention Week, so the fire department brought a truck and a trailer out, and each student was able to practice like kinda how they would handle a fire at their own home. So that was really cool.
I am Joe Isonia. I am also a senior at the high school, so like Catherine said, it's been pretty hectic applying to schools and all of that. And I asked Mr. Grimm from Calvin Leet what was going on at his school, and he told me that during the staff convocation at the beginning of the year, they watched the YouTube video Kane's Arcade and read the book What Do You Do With an Idea by Kobe Yamada. And inspired by this, the students then participated in the Global Cardboard Challenge on Saturday, October 11th. And this event was created by the Imagination Foundation to celebrate creativity and entrepreneurship for children. And about 60 students created cardboard arcade games and displayed them and demonstrated them at school on Saturday. And beforehand, all of the classes analyzed the book and the video to discuss how to turn your idea into a working model. And this was spearheaded by Mrs. Kennedy and Mrs. Trotta, who are teachers at Calvin Leet with support from the PTO. And currently going on at the high school, one of our clubs, Action Against Hunger, one of its many fundraising projects this year is on October 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Sweet Frog, which is the frozen yogurt store across from Walmart. And so basically, you go into Sweet Frog, buy your frozen yogurt, and when you're at the cash register, you have to say that you want the money you were spending on that frozen yogurt to go to Action Against Hunger and a percentage of that will. And then that money then goes to the Guilford Food Bank. And we, or Action Against Hunger is also planning the annual food drive, which was a success last year, and we were able to fill nine truckloads of food. And also, going on at the high school, like Catherine and I have mentioned, college planning is underway with the Common Application, which opened up in August, which most colleges and universities are a part of. And in our school, some English classes are currently writing their college essays as class assignments for their English classes. And Senior Night happened earlier in the year, where transcript forms, candidate statements, and recommendations were all brought up and discussed. And some, a deadline for college applications is November 1st is usually the earliest for early decision and early action, while the others are in January. And for standardized testing, obviously in order to get into college, the SATs were held on Saturday, so scores will be available October 28th. And also pertaining to SAT scores, we scored 16th highest in the state for public high schools.
Adding on to what Joe mentioned about different fundraisers that like high school students are partaking in, the Music Boosters participated in a very successful mattress sale fundraiser. We raised upwards of $4,000 for our music program. So that's pretty big, and it's really exciting. In other news, our fall play is coming up. It's in November. We're putting on Our Town by Thornton Wilder. So our dates for that are, it's the weekend, November 20th to 22nd. So we'd love it if you guys come. And also on the topic of DHS, we're still on schedule to move into the new school over this summer. And I actually went on a tour a few weeks ago, and it's just really exciting to kind of like see the new school become more and more tangible. And it really shows how much our community values education and the students of Guilford, well Guilford High School and just the rest of Guilford, too. Like, we're really, really grateful. So, thank you. Also, in other, kinda just upcoming things that we're discussing at the high school, we're investigating the International Baccalaureate Program, which is one of the most rigorous academic programs in the world. I'm sure you guys have heard much about this. But Mr. Masenti and a group of teachers are currently in Texas attending an IB conference. So that's also just coming up.
Going on with what Mark and Joe are talking about with extra coaches at the high school, our fall sports seasons are well underway. All of our teams are doing exceptionally well on the field and also off the field. Our football booster program, they have been awarded the 13th Best of High School Sports Boosters in the nation, raising money for breast cancer treatment in the month of October. And also, they received an award from the American Cancer Society with Coaches vs. Cancer, recognizing the top 10 schools in the state of Connecticut with cancer boosters from the year 2011 to 2014. And so it's really exceptional seeing how our sports teams also contribute on the field and then also to the greater community around us.
And to lastly add on to that, the high school has an annual Unity Week, which is actually next week, and it just promotes unity within anything and everything, where it's a spirit week. So each day we take part, like for example, wearing the color red on Tuesday and like, and then the next day wearing like the rainbow. And the last day is, we have a Unity Assembly, 8th period, which the entire school takes part of. And we would actually like to thank Peter Colombo because he so gratefully nominated the student body for the LS Ice Bucket Challenge. And he challenged us to, if we could raise $500, someone would be able to dump the bucket of ice on Mr. Masenti's head. So we actually raised over $500. And whoever donates money has put their name in a bucket, and if their name gets drawn, they actually get to pour the ice over him. And Mr. Masenti said he's only doing it if the diffident leaders are ready. So that will be taking part next Friday.
Is that why he's in Texas?
I do so. And that's it. So thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Before you go, sort of in the realm of synchronicity, Long Wharf Theater in New Haven is doing Our Town, started October 8th and runs through November 2nd. So might be fun to see professionals, and probably Guilford High School will do it better, so.
I have a quick question. Is there, do we have an update on Adams and Baldwin?
Is there an update on Adams and Baldwin? Is that part of your...
Yeah, we've reached out, but we haven't received anything.
Okay. Well, they reached out and didn't get an answer back in time for the meeting tonight, but they'll, who's assigned Adams and who's assigned Baldwin?
We'll keep trying.
Okay.
So you mentioned the IB thing, and we've heard about the teachers going down to look at it. We've had some presentations, but is there student involvement in looking at this at all, or what's the word?
At this time, I haven't heard of any student involvement. I think it's mostly, we're really just investigating it, and we're just kind of looking into what the implications just in our school would be. And we're really just getting started into looking at it, so.
Another matter we've talked about that we'd love to have your input on is the start time issue. I don't know if you're familiar with that yet, but we're gonna work you guys pretty hard this year. So, welcome.
Hi. I gave them a heads up when we met, but there were some topics on this year's agenda. I got smirks because I think I hit both of those already. Also want to note that you do see a larger group this year, and I have encouraged our representatives to share the workload. Your representatives to the board are always engaged in four, five, 10, or a dozen other activities. And so while you have all four tonight, I do wanna note in advance that you may not have all four at every meeting. But they're gonna share the load. They're gonna present alternately on other buildings other than the high school. So you may not hear about every school, every meeting, but over the course of the year, I know they'll do a great job bringing you information from all seven of our schools. And I wanna thank you guys again for being willing to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The drill is, you can stay as long as you want. You can, if you got work to do, that's okay. You know, just, it's up to you guys. There will be some meetings where we actually ask you to stay. When Dr. Freeman, for example, when we're talking about start times, or IB, or something like that, we certainly are gonna wanna have your participation and contribution. But you, obviously you've got work, and so we don't wanna, we don't wanna be blamed for any late homework assignments or anything like that, so. So as you choose, but welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Great job. Did a great job.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Okay, Dr. Freeman, we're into item eight, your report. We've already done 8.1. 8.2 is the October 2014 enrollment report, which is somewhere in your packets.
Yep, we provided that for you in your packet this evening, and we've given you the enrollment in two different looks. The first one is the 30,000-foot look and simply shows you that we, as of today, have 3,401 students enrolled in our seven buildings here in Guilford and are responsible overall for the education of 3,472 Guilford residents in our schools. Moving on, we give you a much more granular look. And again, I wanna thank Dr. Moore. He suggested this layout a few years ago, and we have found it very beneficial for presenting the information to you. It gives you a quick history of the grade level distribution, as well as allowing you to look at the elementary, middle, and high school levels comparatively and down to the classroom level. What I will say is that overall, and when you look at the aggregate level, our numbers are very, very comfortable. At the elementary level in grades K through 4, we do not have a grade level average that rises out of the high teens. Our primary and elementary grades, average class sizes in the high teens. Now, we've talked before about how distributing that across five grade levels in four different neighborhood schools, we have classes that will rise into the low 20s, but we don't have a single class average that rises to that level. Interestingly, I will draw your attention to the kindergarten sections, the greatest delta, the greatest distribution across neighborhood schools or grade levels falls at the kindergarten level, where we have at Cox, a kindergarten average that sits at 19 or 20, and at Leet, we have a kindergarten average that sits at 11 and 12. Those are both within the range that we discussed last year as we presented full-day kindergarten. We said that we would not allow class sizes to exceed 20. I'm not pleased to report that we'd actually hit that number, but we have not exceeded that number. We will continue to monitor that as those class grade, as those students move into first grade, there may be adjustments. But at this time, and as the class is loaded into early September, we made the decision not to adjust staffing to hold. And I'll point out, that is the single largest discrepancy that you will see through the school district this year. It happens to fall at kindergarten. At Baldwin, our class averages sit in the low 20s, 22 and 22 and a half. At Adams, our class averages sit in the high teens, 19 and 18. And what we included for you this year on the report that we have not included in the past, the high school loads very differently. At the high school, because of the way classes enroll, it's not as easy as saying we have four sections of first graders and 80 first graders, and you can then just see the class average. But what we did this year is we gave you the high school class averages by level. And we did present this in preliminary information earlier this school year, but our AP classes sit at an average of 18.3. Our honors classes sit at an average of 17 and a half. Our Level 1 sit at an average of 19.8. Our Level 2 at 17.4, and Level 0, 14.8. Those are supported classes. Again, what I'll tell you is that we have class sizes across this district that tend to land in the high teens and in the very low 20s for every grade level. And again, we do have some spikes, just as we have some classes that hit 20s at the elementary level. We have some classes at the high school that will spike to the middle or even high 20s, but you have all the class averages and the distributions as clearly as we could provide them for you this evening.
Why does Baldwin have the highest average of all high schools?
There's a enrollment bubble that's moving through, and so as that bubble moves through, you'll see that shift. In two years, you'll anticipate those almost exact same class sizes moving into Adams as that shifts through. You tend to have troughs and bubbles that travel through, no one class enrolls exactly the same as a previous.
They're actually gonna have a bigger class there next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Going from 4th to 5th, that's actually gonna be a bigger bubble.
You can look back and shift every one of these class sizes up and see how they move forward. Yep.
How is our class size compared to other schools, other districts in our DRG?
Favorably. It's not unusual to have class sizes in the low to mid 20s. This board encouraged a focus on the primary level. We've made investments at the primary level. I think that it is unusual, and it should be a point of pride, that we have elementary and primary class sizes that sit in the high teens in this school system. And I would say it is unusual. I can get you specific information, but I would just say that it's unusual. We also did some comparative data around those high school numbers. We had some preliminary conversations about those. I would say that our high school numbers are favorable as well.
So the real, where do we stand on the demographic study? Because the real question is, you know, the kindergarten enrollment, the two smallest classes that we have by a lot are kindergarten and first grade. So is that the future, or is that, is that an aberration?
It is being completed as we speak. Mrs. Fianella has been sharing information with, with the statistician who is completing that report for us. It is the same individual who completed the last report for us, which held up so well.
That worked out very well.
Yep. And so we've got a high confidence, and he's taking into account the new high school. He's taking into account full-day kindergarten, and, and those are becoming variable in how he's collecting it. We expect to have it before the close of the budget process, so we hope that that will help guide us. Kindergarten is always the most difficult to predict. And obviously, we would have liked to have distributed those numbers better. It's always the most difficult to see coming in.
Although the, when we looked at previous years, there was a jump from kindergarten to first, which we're obviously not seeing, I presume because of full decay.
I would expect.
We would anticipate that jump of, of 7 to 10 students wouldn't exist this year. Yep.
I mean, if you look at it, if I'm just looking quickly at last year's enrollment report, it's down by a little over 100 kids, but they're overwhelmingly, because the class that just graduated is much larger than the enrolling kindergarten class.
Right.
It's, it's, the class that just graduated was one of our largest classes, 275. And the full-day, the kindergarten class is 198, so 77 out of the 113 fewer students are in that, in that kindergarten level.
And that seems to be what districts are seeing across the state, and we're in fact not seeing it at the extreme level that some other districts are seeing.
No, I know. I mean, you know, we went through Madison's enrollment numbers last year, and they're very, very different than ours. But, but I think, like, the question is, at what point does, do classes of 198 and 196 become the norm as opposed to 275? If they're, if that's the norm, then there's some big changes in staffing and, well, at a minimum in staffing, but maybe in other areas, too.
And we will continue to adjust both the level and the placement of those staff as we watch these grades move through the school system.
And can you explain the special education placements? So private is just a private, and student public is another public school where the special needs students are? So what's an example of like a public institution?
It could be an Aces, well, Aces would qualify. It could be, it could be a public school system that offers a program that we don't currently offer. In fact, when we talked about bringing capacity back to our school system, it could be the example in the future where that begins to work in another direction, where students who don't have access to a program that supports students who may be on the autistic spectrum, might begin tuitioning students to Guilford to take advantage of services that we offer in those areas. So it could be simply another public system or a program like Aces.
And that's generally less expensive in the private, or?
Often, yes.
Cause it looks like, I mean, from last year, you went from 30 to 26 for the private, and then up from 7 to 13 in the public, from what I can tell.
Yeah, it's often gonna be a lower tuition price than a private outplacement. We have private outplacements that can run to six figures.
You know, there is a correlation between the status of the economy and the birth rate. And the great recession hit in '08, and those children who were born around that time are entering kindergarten or first grade, so.
Exactly.
So as the economy improves, I'm sure the demographers will take that into account as they make projections.
I was very curious to see the results of the study.
Yeah, well, he hit it right last time, so, yeah, very close. Okay.
We'll continue to monitor this.
Yeah, other questions on enrollment? I mean, obviously, obviously something. And we have to take this into account in budget season and staffing levels and so forth, so let's just save this if we can and...
We will return to this during budget deliberations, absolutely. I also wanted to update the board on Dr. Borland's visit. Dr. Jim Borland has come for the second and third days of his study of high-achieving students here in the school district. He had a full schedule for those two days. He met with teaching staff, administrative staff throughout the school district in different structures. He met with a group of high school students here. He met with an evening group of parents who came in and had approximately 50 parents who joined him for, for that activity. I was present in, I mean, two of those settings and am impressed with the, with the approach that Dr. Borland is taking to his time here in district. We have scheduled him for two additional days. Dr. Borland will be returning to Guilford on December 4th and 5th. During that time, we have talked with him about who he'd like to see and with whom he'd like to have further conversation. We will be scheduling a second parent evening that will take place here at Guilford High School on December 4th. At this time, there is no conflict with evening activities at the high school at that time. That meeting is not limited to high school parents, but high school parents had a conflict on his first visit. So we want to encourage high school-aged parents, our parents of high school-aged students to attend that meeting particularly. Dr. Borland is also gonna continue to meet with students. He's gonna have focus groups at both Adams and Baldwin to talk with students about their experiences here in the school. He's gonna continue to meet with staff. In fact, in the first series of meetings, staff were clustered by assignment. Dr. Borland met with elementary teachers, and he met with high school teachers. He met with special education support staff. He met with principals. In this visit, we are going to cluster involved members of the staff around specific topics or conversations. We're going to put together a K through 12 math conversation for Dr. Borland that will bring together staff who've touched mathematics instruction at every level. We're going to bring together a conversation at the high school level to discuss AP and possibly even IB offerings at the high school. That will include a diverse group of constituents. And there is going to be time available for the Board of Ed, and in fact, I wanted to ask your preference around Board of Education meetings. At this time, I'm thinking that scheduling two opportunities for board members to meet Dr. Borland might be most convenient for all of you. If we were to schedule one late afternoon or early evening on December 4th prior to the evening event, to try to put that at the end of a workday. And if we were to schedule one early on the morning of the 5th, would that work so that every board member felt like you had two windows and we could get three or four or five of you at each of those meetings? Or would the board prefer to schedule one, one time? Dr. Borland even suggested the possibility of individual meetings, and I just worry about the impact to time if we tried to schedule for each of you individually. It would take a pretty good chunk of the two days that he has here to do that. But that has been offered as well.
That's, that's probably the least sensible alternative, because you'd wind up having nine of us saying effectively, if not the same thing, a lot of over...
Yeah, I agree. But he wanted to offer you that option. Yes.
Why don't, why don't you just tentatively schedule an hour and a half, say, each day as, as, at his convenience, and we'll see who can go and if...
Right. I thought to give you two windows, give you the best opportunity to get in. And I don't imagine we're gonna end up with nine and zero. I think you're gonna split across the two meetings, which will allow for a lot of interaction. And I'll do one early and one later, which should give you some variety in the choices.
Perfect. That's good.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about, about what he's doing, or where it is, or what's happening, or anything? Okay.
And then just two other quick items that I did want to mention, to bring to your attention. One was already published in our, news mailing that one out earlier, but I did wanna note, with our shift from two half-day kindergartens to a full-day kindergarten, and after I participated in a survey that was done of neighboring school districts, we're one of the few school districts that has been holding on to a 90-minute snow delay in the mornings. Primarily, we were doing that to be able to fit in two full offerings of half-day kindergarten. Without the half-day kindergarten driving us, recognizing that almost every other school district on the shoreline and around us follows a two-hour delay, which makes for complications when we have staff members and parents who either live here, work elsewhere, or worse, work elsewhere and live here, we will be shifting to a, a standard two-hour delay in incidences that require us to delay real-time school for snow. Public Works appreciates this change. It gives them a little bit more time to work on the roads. It offers us more light. It offers us a little more warmth. I think in the best-case scenario, it would allow us, under delay conditions, to get in more safely and maybe even give us the opportunity to delay on some days where we would otherwise be looking at a closing. So we are going to make sure that we message that very clearly, but I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to point out here to the community that should we have any weather-related delays this year, they will be for a standard two-hour delay. And then the only other one I wanted to mention is that tomorrow here at the high school, we will be hosting... we will be hosting an instructional round, a little bit of practice of professional learning that is very similar to the learning walks that we engage in here locally, that we have trained all of you in, that Dr. Moore got to participate in as the first board member just last week. This instructional rounds, however, will be bringing superintendents from across the state of Connecticut, from both urban and really high-achieving affluent community school districts as well, and educators from both Harvard and UConn, and it is structured by the Connecticut Center for School Change. Mr. Masenti has offered to host us here. We'll be hosting that visit tomorrow, visiting classrooms all over the state. We'll talk about ways that we can continue the level of excellence that we provide, and in fact, improve the level of service that we provide to our students. So we're very excited about that visit, and we'll report back to you further after it's been completed.
Dr. Moore, do you want to talk about your, your experience doing the...
I'm sorry, I said, Joe. Sure.
I should have, had I been a little more alert, I would have asked before me.
No, it was great. So I went to Lakes, and we had Jill Hale, the principal, Paul, Anne, and then principal from Jones.
Paula McCarthy.
Paula McCarthy was there, so the four of us went to, how many classes did we go to?
Probably eight or 10.
Eight or 10?
Yeah.
And so, we met for probably half an hour before starting, and then we'd have about four minutes in each class, which is enough to get the flavor, I think. I mean, there's a lot going on in a lot of these classes where they, especially where they have small groups, so it can be tough to get the whole picture in four minutes. And then there's, you know, Jill was keeping time, so we had to keep moving, and then you speak in the hallways, and there's observations, and then wonderings, I think is what they call them. And it was really helpful for me to look. One of the nice things, I don't know if this was, at Paul's request, or just, you know, just happened this way, it was all math, actually. So it was all the Bridges implementation from K through 4, oh, pre-K actually, through 4. So it was a really nice opportunity to see how they were implementing that, and I think, as I mentioned in the email to the board, I mean, there's no doubt, I mean, the kids are very engaged in this, so, you know, I was pleasantly surprised, I mean, not, maybe not surprised, but I was just glad to see that Bridges is very, it's got a lot of ways to approach things, so they are being very interactive. You know, there's some things we talked about, some issues that, you know, they always could be done better and stuff, but it was, it was good for me to see that, you know, implementation. I appreciated the opportunity to be an observer for it, and I thought it was a neat experience.
We're looking forward to the whole cycle of being able to bring board members into that. The request to look at math actually came from the guiding coalition within the school. Bridges being so new to them, and the staff recognizing that a learning walk gives them building-wide feedback, the teachers asked if they could all have the math activities during the walk, so that we saw math activities happening pre-K through 4 in every classroom. And then the feedback will help Jill and her team to shape their work of implementing the Bridges this year. We met for about a half an hour before and probably another 45 minutes after to talk about what we saw, what kind of feedback Jill would bring to her staff, and what it tells her about next steps her building needs to take. So it was fun to have Dr. Moore there. We're looking forward to all of your visits throughout the learning walk cycle this year.
It doesn't make the teachers nervous, right?
No, I mean, I think they look pretty comfortable. I mean, they're very comfortable having people in their classrooms here in Guilford. I think maybe a little more anxious, knowing that board members are part of it, but, no, I didn't see anybody who was hyvee or hyperventilating.
Oh, my God. Hyvee.
There was not a single hyperventilation in the entire...
It's a good thing you had a doc with you.
That's right. I couldn't do anything.
Give us a call.
And that concludes my report for this evening.
And just to let people know, I asked Dr. Freeman, you know, it seems like there's been a flood of lists, top 10 lists, and top 20 lists, and blue medal lists, and gold ribbon lists, and so forth, and I asked Dr. Freeman to maybe for next meeting, kind of try to pull some of these together, and what is it that they are measuring, and what is it that we, that is material to us, and what is it that really isn't that material to us? Because, you know, we see, you know, CONCAN has Guilford High School as the Connecticut Coalition for Achievement now, very respected group, has Guilford High as 10th in the state. The SATs are 16th in the state for public high schools. US News has this one place, somebody else has this somewhere else. What does it mean?
US News and World Report ranks us as 24th in the state. If you only use SAT as the sole measure, we're 16th in the state, and CONCAN ranks us as 10th in the state.
But what are they ranking?
That's what we, I think, I think it would be helpful. We will do our best to speak to each of those and give you a ballpark, and I can guarantee you, we won't be able to give you the correct metric, but we will talk to each of the assessments and how they tend to measure, what they tend to measure, how they tend to rank. There was another recent ranking that came out, and Guilford didn't appear at all. Well, that one was because to participate, you needed to complete an extensive series. It was, it was an opt-in participation.
Was that the name of it?
Yes, it was an opt-in ranking versus we measure everybody all the time anyway. And we try to schedule our time and use our time and be jealous of our time, so we don't necessarily participate in every opt-in ranking that is offered to us, and then there's some organizations that look at everybody all the time. So we'll try to give you a broad brush of what those look like.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting that, you know, you spend full time between now and then. It's just, it's, it's kind of like, why? What, you know, what is it that they are trying to measure? And it may or may not be important to us, frankly, you know, it may be helpful or may not be helpful, but it would be at least helpful to know why, and so then we can make that, that second level decision, so.
Yep, happy to report on that.
Okay. Board agenda, I think we are up to 9.1, which is to act on a couple of personnel items. There's ratify appointments to teachers, a full-time teacher, Melanie Schlecker, Special Ed at the high school, and a part-time, halftime, Laura Shobert, Special Ed at LEET. Is there a motion to ratify the appointments?
I'll move.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
So begs the question, do we have any more openings?
No, this leaves us full in the certified positions with the exception of the middle-level math coach.
Math coach.
And that is, we continue to work to recruit, and at this level, literally recruiting at a national level, and we need to regroup and reassess our strategy.
What happened? What do you think? What was the, I know that you made an offer to somebody and that...
In our first search, we only found one candidate who we found to be appropriate, about whom we were excited. I think we chose wisely because that, that candidate received other offers, and some of them were more competitive than ours. We have talked to colleagues in the state, we've talked to colleagues out of state, we've talked to people who are recognized nationally in the area of mathematics, we've asked IFL to work with us. I've made offers to employees of IFL, I've made offers to... But they're happy about that. Yeah, I don't think they watch our recordings. We have a high standard, and it's an unusual, it's a difficult position to fill.
I think it's very different from the literacy coaches in that we were expecting math certification as well as experience in staff development, and those two don't always go hand in hand, or looking for someone with math certification and leadership training, like in '092. So those candidates were really difficult to locate, because this is a staff developer, and that's a really important piece, but we also believe that to have the kind of credibility that the staff, to respect this person, they really need to have the certification as well, and some classroom experience. It's easier at the elementary because you have more candidates that have elementary certification and have leadership training, but when you get to the middle grades, especially by Adams, where we're looking for, you know, 712 certification in mathematics, that was a little bit more difficult to find.
Well, I applaud you for not settling. We, we had to go back when we were hunting for a special ed director, we went back twice, and we wound up with an outstanding person. When we're looking for an assistant superintendent, we did the same thing, and we wound up with Jason, who we're all very pleased with. So just keep looking, you'll find somebody, but don't settle.
The only upside here is that this is a new position, and so while it remains vacant, it's not a hole. It is a new position and a new level of support that we haven't yet been able to initiate, but we will continue to work for it.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, 9.2 is the amendments to the teacher evaluation program table in this exhibit.
Well, yes, there's additional copies if people need them. What we did was we gave you the entire document once again, but the only thing that we need to draw your attention to tonight are a series of highlighted changes in yellow. This board received this entire document before, and we received our response from the state the day after you looked at it. You looked at it at a Monday meeting, and we heard back from the state the following Tuesday. What I can tell you is that the changes in all but one area, I would consider insignificant, and in fact, semantics. The one significant change in the plan appears on page 5, and it has to do with the number of observations that are required for teachers in their cycle. At the end of last year, the state began to recognize that observing every teacher three to six times formally every year was burdensome and unnecessary, and they allowed for a three-year cycle to be entered into. We had originally built our plan around two informal evaluations in years two and three, if the teacher received a satisfactory overall ranking in year one. The one substantial change is that the state would not approve our plan with only two informal observations in years two and three. They have required that we have a minimum of four informal observations in years two and three. Now, while that doubles the workload of our work, what we have done is we have talked about the philosophy and the theory behind an informal observation, and in fact, we've been doing some discussion and some training and some professional readings with both our administrative staff and the extended group of evaluators at the high school, who will this year include department heads for the first time. We are more completely embracing the work of Kim Marshall, who has a whole system built on many observations, frequent, unannounced, informal observations that result in really clear feedback and conversation. So while that is a significant change, I don't think that it is, I don't think that our plan is going to collapse under the weight of this change. I'm in fact finding the administrators and evaluators embracing this change. It's more informal, it's in fact more formative than, than what we had even been talking about, and I think it may in fact be a move in a positive direction. We've purchased copies of Kim Marshall's work for every principal. We're going to be working as a leadership team focusing on this informal and formative component, and in fact, I continue to have other school districts who ask what we're doing in that area, and can they talk to us about our plan. All of the other changes I would call really, really minor. For instance, on the same page 5, we didn't change the surveys that we intend to be using this year. We referenced that the surveys were built on the surveys the state provided from seed and from Panorama, a survey provider. Once we named our references, they approved our, our initial plan was rejected because they didn't believe that our surveys were going to be credible and reliable enough. We referenced whose work we used, they're now credible and reliable enough. In fact, we have had a meeting with Panorama in the school system. There are 34 other districts in Connecticut working with Panorama. Mr. Sands shared a New York Times article about California schools that are working with Panorama. I believe, as we've talked about our surveys, and doing our surveys in a way that is more predictable, more consistent over time, I think we are going to partner with Panorama. It is a very reasonable service, and they will help us to be able to build longitudinal reliability across our surveys. I can forward the article that Mr. Sands shared with me. They're doing a lot of work in really big districts like Los Angeles, and they're working with a lot of districts similar to us here in Connecticut. I've checked with other superintendents who are working with them. I think we're going to move in that direction.
So what did seed stand for something?
I'm sorry, the seed was the off-the-shelf evaluation process that Connecticut provided. So when the new legislation passed, every district was given the opportunity to either adopt the seed plan or write your own local plan. So we wrote our local plan, but components of it, we tracked closely to seed, and this is one of those areas.
And there's a survey, are there actual surveys that you can look at?
Yeah, they had paper surveys that were associated with the seed plan. I can get you the state templates for both the seed and the ones that Panorama provided, and show those to you if you're interested.
Yeah, it'd be helpful.
Yep.
And then, the other survey that's mandated by state law to go out is the climate survey, is that right?
Yes.
So basically, they're, have you thought about whether, are you doing those as two separate surveys? Is that the...
No, what we did this year is collapse them, and what we're asking Panorama to do for us is to collapse those into one survey that asks the two different kinds of questions, and we can then report out of that one survey, results that speak to both the climate of the building, and the climate survey really focuses on bullying awareness and creating an environmentally safe setting. The, the evaluation systems talk about the administration, the management, and the customer satisfaction component of the school system. The first thing we did with Panorama is we said, you're working with 34 other Connecticut school districts, who's already doing this really well, and please provide us with their surveys, so that we can look at where, if there's no reason to start from scratch here. And again, it's worth noting, many of the questions that we did use both, both years on those surveys came from the template Panorama provided, so we've also asked them, while you're building a new survey tool for us, if you incorporate questions we've already asked in the first couple of years, we may in the first year be able to generate a three-year longitudinal projection if we use some of those, those questions that we've already pulled, so that's what we're looking to do.
This will happen in the spring, probably?
Yes, we hope for an administration in late winter, early spring.
Is it possible for the board to see the survey before it's finalized and sent out?
Absolutely.
I just think it'd be helpful for us to be able to look at...
Yeah, you've mentioned that before, and we have every intention of bringing it forward to you before launching it. Panorama also provides reporting tools that we haven't had access to. We've been working with Survey Monkey. Panorama has a much more sophisticated reporting system that we will have access to. New Haven Public Schools uses a Panorama reporting system, so if you were to go to New Haven Public Schools and look for their parent or climate surveys, you'd get a taste of what the Panorama reporting tools can look like. Other changes that we made on page 6, we needed to clarify what types of assessments would be used when teachers set goals and measure their growth in those goals based on student performance. We were very clear that we didn't expect our teachers to build their goals, the student learning outcomes, only on standardized assessments. We didn't say clearly enough that at least one measure must be a non-standardized measure, so we went back and clarified that one measure must be non-standardized. At the bottom of the page, this was probably the one that I had the single biggest philosophical difference around. We needed to add an entire paragraph that said, our professional development here in the school system will be informed by what we learn through the teacher supervision and evaluation plan. My problem with that is that is like when at the classroom level, we talk about assessment in the classroom needs to inform instruction. That makes a lot of sense, but that's an antiquated sentence structure. Assessment is part of instruction, they're completely integrated. When you're trying to say that assessment is a different thing that is outside instruction and only informs instruction, you're actually separating DNA at two final level. Assessment and instruction should happen in a really organic reciprocal relationship. I believe that a good teacher supervision evaluation plan is the best individual professional development that any teacher gets. An administrator sitting with you and looking at your lesson plan, coming in and watching you teach that plan, implement that plan, and then sitting and debriefing how successful you were on that plan, and then later in the, in the year, layering student performance data on top of that, that's the best individual coaching and professional development that any teacher ever gets. So I only had a problem in that by saying this, I think that we artificially separate professional development from the, I get why it has to be there, and we inserted the paragraph, and we passed with flying colors, but I think that we are looking at it at a less sophisticated level when we say that evaluation informs PD as if they're two separate processes. They're not, and so that was the one issue that I had there. For calculating ratings, we simply added the two tables. We didn't say clearly enough what the four levels were by adding the two tables. The state was satisfied, and I predicted this. We had to add an entire appendix K to the document because we didn't explain how we would train and calibrate our team to implement the plan, but we added appendix K, and the state is fully comfortable with our plan at this time. We are fully comfortable... We are fully comfortable with the plan. In fact, teachers and principals are already beginning to talk about evaluation and support in the buildings this year and so I simply needed to highlight those changes for you and ask that you again, receive this plan. It doesn't require formal approval from you, but we need to present the plan to the Board of Education technically before we can begin processing teachers through the plan. That's the technical requirement. Quite honestly, the only trouble we would find ourselves in is if at any time, we were ever to begin taking action towards a teacher because of performance and the board had not acted on this plan or received the plan and allowed us to move forward. In that, in that situation and only in that situation, there's no teeth in the legislation. We're required, you're required to receive the plan, we're required to present it to you, we're required to receive state approval, but there are no sanctions should we fail to do that. Mr. Bloss asked me what the downside to not accepting and approving a plan was. It comes down to labor relations.
It was really just tonight. In other words, if people wanted some time to read this over and, and you know, go through it, that's the only, but that was my own idea.
And we would not be in that situation.
You're not planning on any adverse personal actions in the next 30 days, I guess, but...
Can I just ask a question about that?
Oh, go ahead.
I just want to have, ask a question about the impact of evals.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
So I guess I, I know there's a lot of concern about the teacher eval. What I've heard just anecdotally is that it can be very difficult to get exemplary because of all the qualifications, but that, you know, proficient should be attainable. What is the actual impact if a teacher, you know, has been here long enough and, you know, I guess a few years, they have tenure or whatever, the difference between proficient and exemplary, does that have any real impact on?
Yeah, what we, impact to the teacher, no. And their standing, there would be no difference in professional standing for a teacher who had been rated as proficient for three or four years compared to a teacher who was rated exemplary for three or four years. We have included for you a copy of the classroom rubric and so if you wanted to look through, you could see that we did make the far right column really aspirational. It is, and you'll also notice that the, the rubric is shaded because the way that we want to use this tool with teachers is developmental and formative. We want to say to a teacher, almost nobody could live in the dark shaded area all the time. To be in that dark shaded area every moment of every day is really hard to do. Our goal with all of this is to help you spend more time, more regularly in the dark shaded areas of the rubric. Ideally, what we should be able to do over years is begin to drop the left-hand column and add a more aspirational column to the right and we should always be striving and never able to spend all of our time in the shaded areas of the rubric. I struggle with the four-point rating system because last year as a board, we read mindset together and we talked about the idea that we want people to be growth-minded. A lot of our teachers were good students themselves and loved school and were successful at school and a lot of our teachers want a four and they, they want the A. And so they, rather than necessarily saying, "How could I challenge myself? How could I be better?" We're, in a way, we are diverting from what we've done in our classrooms for the last 10 years with students in the way that we're now talking to teachers about their performance in the classroom. I was invited to be part of a focus group meeting at the State Department of Education to talk about the evaluation plan and one of my biggest pieces of feedback was, "We're not intimidated by the workload." I'm hearing from teachers and principals that they are enjoying the conversations that this generates. We launched this with a third of our teachers last year and most of those teachers said, "I really liked having that sort of nitty-gritty tough conversation after the classroom." But I advocated for completely dropping the four-point rating system, keeping all of the other elements of evaluation, but dropping the rating system. It is pushing us into a fixed mindset when we want to be moving more towards a growth mindset. I would rather be talking to a teacher about, "How do I do better tomorrow?" than talking to a teacher about, "Why did you give me a three? I think I was a four." It's the same question, but it's a really different approach to that question. Not, "Why didn't I get a four?", but, "How do I do better tomorrow?" Same question, but phrased in a very different way. And so we're, we're working at every level to try to make what is essentially a fixed mindset tool into a growth-minded experience for our staff. And I think we've done a great job. I think the evaluation committee has done really good work putting this together. I think that the principals and evaluators are doing great work rolling it out. Principals this year are already trading back ways that they collect data when they're in the classrooms for the informal conversations. Doug Hamel has a form that he's brought and shared with all of us. Other principals are doing it on tablets when they go in. It's a good conversation to be having, but it doesn't affect your rehire status or your tenure or your pay or any of those other components. That was a really long answer, I apologize.
Well, you're trying to change self-perception, the perception of the person being rated and that's not an easy thing to do.
Yeah, I did try to read through this a bit. Just a question on the columns. When you look at the, there's four columns, right?
Yep.
And there's below standard and developing, A, B, C. Is there supposed to be proficient and exemplary as headings or no?
Yes, when we report to the state, there are four levels. There is below standard, developing, proficient and exemplary. What our committee wanted to do, and so you can still see those four columns, they exist. When we are doing a formal evaluation with ratings, the four columns translate to below standard, developing, proficient and exemplary. But when we are using this tool for any of the informal meetings, we wanted to be able to say, "There's below standard and that's not good enough." And if you're in below standard, we're going to approach that with one, with one approach and with one set of tools. But everybody else is developing and it's a matter of where you are in developing and in fact, our, our tool has 17 indicators on it. Most people aren't proficient in all 17 indicators. You develop in fits and starts. You might be really proficient in some things, exemplary at one or two and below standard in some others. So we wanted the tool to be able to be seen and we took the words off simply because we want the tool to communicate, "Everybody's developing, everybody's getting better, nobody gets to exemplary and quits, everybody's in process to exemplary." And so we removed the words from the tool for that reason. The state knows that the tool translates to four levels and that's really why we needed to include the tables in appendix A. They translate the rubric to four rating levels in each of the four scored categories, which is observation, teacher performance goal, student learning outcomes and whole school goal. Those are the four areas we need to rate every teacher in and that's why they required the tables in appendix A. We kept them out because they're fixed mindset. They tell you what number you are. We had to put them back in in order to be accepted.
At some point, will we ever get like a report of, you know, de-identified obviously, but like what the breakdown is of where these, you know, teachers are? It'd just be interesting to me to see what the spectrum is in the district.
Last year, we did one-third of the staff. We needed to report those raw numbers to the state. I can provide that information to you as well.
And this is, I'd like to just observe that this, this whole teacher evaluation, the seed program, the seed model was one of the generators of a great deal of friction between teachers and administrators and boards of ed and superintendents. It was not a very, at least for us, it was not a very well-thought-out plan frankly. And one of the things that I think Dr. Freeman and the entire committee, the, because you know, we went down a different road here. We, we didn't, we didn't impose something on teachers.
We didn't just accept the seed plan, the state plan. We created our own.
And, and decided that probably involving teachers was a better way to go than just telling teachers this is going to be the way it is.
Dropping them on, it on, yes.
And, and so, no, I, this, this hasn't had a lot of publicity, it's not on the front page of the paper, but the, the, Dr. Freeman and, and the committee have done a, a lot of work in, in getting beyond this friction, this, 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 this absolutely unnecessary tension that was created by the state program. And I, you know, we've all heard it, we've all heard teachers all around the state are very unhappy, I think is fair to say, with, with the state evaluation program. So, you know, the committee's done a really terrific, terrific job and, and I think the teachers, I get, I think the teachers feel good about it. I mean, as a, as a group.
I wouldn't say they're overly excited about it and I think the thing that they're most concerned about is the rating scale. I will tell you, the teachers who engaged in it last year saw it as more work than they had been asked to do in the past around their own evaluations, valued, I think, the quality of the conversations that came out of it. And I think, if I could speak for them, the thing they liked the least was the rating system. They didn't mind the increased work, I don't think, and I don't think, and I think they enjoyed the level of feedback that, that this generated for them. But I think everybody struggled with being told, "You're a three" or a two or a four." Yes.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at is that, that given that they're, under state law, there was going to be something.
Yes.
And it was either going to be the state standard program or it was going to be something else. I think what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that I think the teachers are, are recognized the amount of work that was done to get us out of the state box and to get us into a much more productive box, which, which I think was everybody's intention, I hope.
I would agree. So I would ask your approval tonight, but I would tell you that there's no downside into waiting a month if the board feels that you need a month to digest.
I, I think it's a good idea to act on it because of the labor issue, but you know, do people want more time to read this over? I don't, I really have no strong feeling about it one way or the other.
Well, the format was very helpful, coming in a high, already highlighted. It was a long document to get through, but you could get through it quickly.
We had already seen most of us in here so that I think approving this tonight would be an easy thing to do because we've already pointed out those things that were, and there were far and few between, that were additions or changes.
Great.
Okay. Dr. Moore, do you, are you okay with that or? Okay, then I take that that's a motion to...
That is a motion to approve.
Okay, Ms. Renner, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
9.4 is to act on our, on our ever-shrinking consolidated grant application, which is now down to...
Actually, it's growing.
By how much?
About $40,000.
All right. It's better than nothing.
A little bit better.
All right, hang on a second, let me pull it up if I can find it. That is to submit a, here it is, a submit a grant application to the, is this all federal or is this?
Yes. This is federal that flows through the state? So we filed, yeah.
The total is $287,495,000, no, $287,495 directly to us and $5,147 through the Branford Board of Education. This is Title I, Title II, Part A and Title III, Part A. So is there a motion, what do we need, a motion to apply for these grants?
So moved.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then you have 9.5 is to act on a proposed donation of $1,000 from the Guilford High School Field Hockey Stick Club for socks, jerseys and pennies.
What's a penny?
It's like a red sliverless jersey that...
Oh, yeah.
It's the same body motion. It's the universal sign.
It's like a tank top thing, you know, everybody's, so you can, so you can separate kids into two teams. Teams that are wearing the same, or, or either the same uniforms or completely not matching.
Find my uniforms.
So I, so I take it you're making...
No pennies in New York?
No pennies in New York? Okay, is that a motion second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, good, thanks. I will send Dr. Freeman your, your thanks. Now, 9.6, we have some graduation requirement potential changes.
We do. So I, let me speak to these for, for a few minutes, but also mention that Julia Chaff is here with us if board members have particular questions that she might be better prepared to answer. So Ms. Chaff, Mr. Masenti and Ms. LaZott, who's our senior guidance sponsor here at the high school, approached the policy committee last year requesting that we consider an increase in credit requirements from '22 to '25 for graduation. I'm just going to briefly read something that Ms. Chaff hinted out to us. "To be prepared for success in college and the workplace, all students must acquire deep understanding in the core areas of English, mathematics, science and social studies. Additionally, coursework in the fine arts, comprehensive health and physical education will ensure that our students obtain a balanced and well-rounded education." The proposal is to begin with a class of 2019, so those would be next year's freshman class, so that the four classes that are presently at the high school would continue with the, with the credit expectations that are in place presently.
Yes.
The, the group again, Mr. Masenti, Ms. Chaff, Ms. LaZott, provided us with a very detailed plan for how these credits would play out for each student and those are listed specifically both in the policy and in the regulation that accompanies it. I will just very briefly mention Cluster One, Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics, STEM, eight credits. Cluster Two, Humanities, 11 credits. This includes English, Social Studies, Fine Arts, World Languages. Cluster Three, Career and Life Skills, total four credits, which includes comprehensive health, education, physical education and career and life skills, that including a number of options, business courses, technology and engineering courses, world language, community service, capstone projects or other career and life skills courses. And then finally, two electives. Another piece of this proposal is that the community service requirement for graduation, which presently is 20 hours, would increase to 30 hours. Julia, am I forgetting anything important? So the, again, the policy in front of us provides all of this information as an addition and the regulation does the same while maintaining the present graduation requirements for the classes of 2015, 2016, 2017 and 2018.
Okay, this is a receive-only.
Yes.
This is a receive-only, absolutely. Absolutely.
How many credits does, you know, the average graduating GHS senior complete now?
Yeah, I think that more than 90% of our students already have 25, if not 26 credits. Julie, that's...
Yeah, terrific, yeah, so there's...
It has that data in there.
On the pa, on the third page, there will be a column with the percentage of students in the last, in the graduate classes 2010 to 2013 that had 24 credits or greater and in 2013, that was 92%. So almost everyone had reached at least 24 credits. This would obviously be a little bit more than that. I can tell you, the policy committee had a number of issues that they discussed with the high school group that, that came to us that was very helpful. One of them was, you know, what would it take to get that small percentage of kids who haven't traditionally reached 25 credits? Was, was the staff prepared for that? What would this mean in terms of additional staffing? What would it mean in terms of scheduling? So that there has been an enormous amount of work put into thinking about all of those pieces.
This was all sparked by the need to be in alignment with secondary school reform, which continues to be delayed, but this would bring us in alignment with the expectations of the secondary school reform legislation. Hasn't been, yes. Yep. It was in process, it's been delayed a couple times now. I don't know if it'll ever come forward, but we began this work because we anticipated needing to be in alignment. Many of the schools that we often compare ourselves to are already at this level.
While the, again, while the number of, and Julia, I'm going to actually correct you if I'm wrong, but while the, the percentage of students who have not in the past necessarily gotten to 25 credits are not all in a particular subgroup, Justin Stasiano, who is the special ed director here at the high school, coordinator at the high school, has, has been a, an active participant in these discussions as well, which was very reassuring to the policy committee who was just concerned that again, everyone had had a piece of the conversation regarding that group of students which has not traditionally gotten to 25. And in some cases, they haven't gotten to 25 because that hasn't been an expectation and in other cases, there could be other reasons as well.
Have the students had any input in this?
We did not seek direct input from students in the self-study. We looked at our trend data in terms of the number of credits.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Let me try that again. We didn't solicit direct input from students in terms of preferences for graduation credit. However, when we did the self-study, we did look at trend data in terms of the number of credits that our students are graduating with, and what you have is sort of the majority of what our students are doing. We also found a surprising number were far exceeding a 22-credit graduation requirement. I mean, they were in the high twenties and some even into the thirties in terms of the numbers of credits that they were accruing in their four-year career at the high school. I would also add to what Katie said about consulting Mr. Scanziano to make sure that we weren't going to, that we were going to afford everyone the opportunity that they needed to do well with increasing the graduation credit. So if you look at the proposed pupil plan, progression proposal, excuse me, you'll see that in the ninth and 10th grade year, it's a six-credit accrual, and then once you get into 11 and 12, it's a slightly higher number of credits at that point, because, again, looking at our trend data and consulting Mr. Scanziano, what we found is that by the time our kids are hitting 11th grade, they tend to be hitting their stride in terms of getting on track with whatever may have happened in ninth or 10th grade that might have set them back or set them behind. So I guess the answer, the short answer to your question is no, we didn't get direct input from students in terms of what they would prefer, but we did try to be very mindful about what they're actually doing and what we are very confident that they're capable of doing.
And I have prepped your reps, but you may want to ask them about this at your next meeting. They're expecting to be quizzed on this one.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have these four very nice students, and it'd be nice to hear their views.
Yep. And was there any attempt to talk to parents, or get any parental thoughts about this?
We did not consult parents per se, although we have been vocal about it, about the conversation, about the proposal at different venues like our back-to-school night. We have invited conversation that way. In addition, with our Connections group, our parent group called Connections, we have presented the information to them and solicited some direct feedback from them as well, and they were asking very similar questions to what you're asking us tonight in terms of, you know, how did you go about collecting the information?
So just for our TV audience, some of the data that was provided us, the percentage of students with 26 credits or greater, so the proposal is for 25, but those with 26 credits or greater in 2013 was 74%. So the majority of our students not only have no problem reaching the graduate requirements at present, but would exceed what is being proposed.
That is correct, yes. And if you look at the trend data over the last four years, particularly in the 26 credits or greater, you'll see that that, there's a significant growth there over the last four to five years.
Okay, other, go ahead.
Meeting, that, how substantial is that to, of a burden to go from 20 to 30 hours? Is that right?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear the question.
The community service, you're increasing from 20 to 30 hours?
Yes, and actually, that was of more concern to Mr. Scanziano than the actual credit increase. There was much more conversation with him around the number of community service hours, and that was because if the students are taking on the additional rigor of taking more courses to graduate, he was concerned that adding the additional pressure of community service hours on top of that would be prohibitive for some students. And so our initial proposal was much higher. We were actually going to shoot for 50 hours of community service. What you'll see on the second page was sort of a compromise between those two, because, again, we have some students who are doing hundreds of hours of community service with very significant community service projects. We wanted to give them the opportunity to get credit for that, but at the same time, we didn't want to overly burden students who would have trouble fulfilling, you know, the 20 or 30 hours. 30 hours, he felt, was a reasonable request for all of our students at the high school to complete within four years. So if you look back at the second page, underneath, under Cluster Three, Career and Life Skills, there is a, an opportunity for someone to receive community service credit by doing a 60-hour project, and the 60 hours is not arbitrary. It's comparable to the number of hours that our students do when they complete a capstone project for a semester. And obviously, they receive credit for that capstone project as well.
So I think community service is great, I just wonder, why is, why does it, do we feel like we need to increase it? I mean, is it the high school's job to ensure that people are doing community service?
A lot of the more recent developmental work and programming work that we're doing has to do not only with academic success, but your involvement in and with the community around you.
No, I think it's great.
You've heard talk of the student success plans, I think, and the student success plans are very much about not just developing yourself academically, but contributing to the world around you, and I think that that's in keeping with the philosophy behind those success plans that we've put into place, grade six through 12.
It seems like a reasonable amount of people, like you said, are already taking more than 25 credits. Is there, I think you started to talk about this, but is there a staffing concern for the expectation that people will be doing 25 credits?
There is an expectation, I'm so afraid of saying the wrong number, of a proposed 1.3 FTE?
There were different numbers discussed at different times.
Okay, so let me take that back and say that there is an expectation that there may be some kind of, a staffing increase that would be associated with this, and that there's a lot of work being done to try to predict what that might be.
And as the requirements are going to be phased in with the incoming freshman class, you could anticipate that that staffing impact will be phased across the next four years, and we have only looked at very initial projections. We haven't looked carefully at what that impact would be yet.
And how does the potential of IB fit into this? Would that change?
My understanding is that this, this proposal fits actually quite well with IB if IB is something that is pursued, that that has all been taken into account. Yes.
I think it'd be helpful to get some data on staffing before we vote on this. Isn't, is that the intention, that we're going to, we don't want to vote on something and find out that this is, we're going to have to add five staff people?
It's such a moving target. We talked about it a bit, obviously, and the numbers range from what Katie said to something higher than that, but it really depends on where students are going to land. You know, I mean, you can take 25 credits, you look at the percentages, and have zero impact on staffing, because most students are.
No, but if they're 20 additional percent of the student body, that's going to take an additional two, one or two credits.
Based on the census, I mean, by 2019, it should be okay if we stayed at its current staffing.
Right, that's what I said.
We'll have our demographic study next month.
Well, that's true.
Well, no, no, we agree, because the policy committee, in fact, asked specifically for a look at that, and I think that the problem is that it's hard to predict what that will be. I mean, there are clearly, there are a couple of specific requirements related to the additional credits, STEM, that may require, or may not require, depending on how, how students proceed with their 25 or more credits. And also, again, a sense that so many kids are already there, that it may be just a redistribution mostly, not truly, it's hard to, it's hard to know.
I'd also like to point out that in the projections that we have, you know, in the conversations we've had projecting this forward, there are certain limitations that we have in this building, and I know you're tired publicly of hearing about those limitations, but let's take an art class, for example. Currently, I have an art classroom that is capped at 16 students because of a kiln that is way outdated and dangerous, and we can't fit more than 16 students safely in that room. So can we then absorb some of the, you know, staffing needs in an art room that has the capacity to hold closer to 20 students? You know, I think things like that need to be considered as well. If you look, if I'm a gambling person and I look at Cluster One, I'm pretty sure we're going to need another math teacher. That would be one FTE, only because of the four-credit requirement. We're moving from three. There's been some sectioning shifts that have occurred as a result of, you know, how we've realigned our curriculum, but we're also in the first year of that shift at the high school, so we don't know exactly how that will shake out in year two and into year three with those shifts. So I'm not trying to be coy or indirect with you, we have made our best guesses in terms of what we may need, but we also think that it's something that we could phase in over the next four years. So even if we were talking of something upwards of three FTE, let's say, as a number that has been discussed, we're not saying, well, we need three FTE by next year. So that's kind of the cap or the top number that we've talked about in terms of what we might need, but again, it's a projection. It's very much a projection.
We would need, if we were to make this change for September and to have this publicized appropriately and make all the changes to the course catalogs, having this board take action in the November meeting would be the best timeframe to be able to make those changes. While we won't have final budget projections for that meeting, and it's actually early, Mr. Bowden and I can meet with Mrs. Chaff and with Mr. Masenti and try to have a better staffing impact number for you when we meet in November. So it won't be final, it wouldn't be the final budget.
Of course.
But, yes, but we will, we will effort that early in the process this year and have a better figure for you, so that when we ask you to make this change for notification-publication reasons, we'll be able to at least give you a better ballpark of the impact we expect in the first year and in years moving forward of this, in this component alone. Obviously, everything that we tinker with at the high school is going to have butterfly effects on things, so we can, we may be able to project the changes that we think a credit change alone would have. When we add IB to that, then there's going to be an effect either in one direction or another. When we look at the enrollment study, that's going to have an effect either in one direction or another, and we'll continue to trace those other strings as we move through the budget process this year. But we'll try to have at least a projection as to the staffing cost to this decision alone in isolation to help the board make this decision. Again, when we started this, we were expecting to tell you, and the legislation takes effect next September, so we have to make this move, and then the legislation faded from the view. So we began this thinking that this was a must-do. We're now here with all of you because this is something that we realized most of our students are doing anyway, and should we move in that direction regardless. But it's no longer a must-do, at least not at the moment. We don't know what's going to happen ultimately with the secondary school reform legislation.
Not a must-do as a matter of statutory requirement, but it became clear in the presentations, we actually had a couple different presentations over time on this, that it was a must-do in terms of setting a more reasonable minimum requirement for our students to have 25 credits and have a, the opportunity to take a class or an elective rather than a extra study hall to fill the time. 25 credits isn't that hard.
Over four years.
And two other things I want to add, there's also the appropriate language that Planning and Placement Team can obviously make any changes that's appropriate for various students, special ed students. And finally, the, we had a special meeting to vote on this final language, but the regulation that you received in your packets is not the final regulation, just one minor change. If you turn to it, the third page where the chart is, the cumulative point, average matrix, and it simply says, et cetera, and those boxes are filled with the actual numbers in the final regulation that the policy committee has approved.
Which I believe you may have gotten in your packets.
I was just going to say, we should have that for everybody.
Yep, so I think you have that in the packet, it's all completely filled in.
Yep.
Can I ask, it would be great if this three-page presentation that we just received could be available, is it on the website? Could be posted for, for parents and others to view?
Yeah, we can make that available.
You know, what's interesting is, you know, looking at the census, you'd think that it would be lower in four years, but actually, if the same number of kids stayed in school, that the number of kids in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is 15 higher than, are in ninth, twelfth, and eleventh, twelfth right now.
There's not a major change in the middle and upper schools for 10 years.
But we usually lose some kids between middle school and high school, who go on to...
Although that may change too, with the new high school.
Yeah, we don't know.
Well, but not that many, frankly. You know, the, for the enrolling ninth-grade class here went from 308 in eighth grade last year to 296 in ninth grade this year. Okay, 12 kids, that doesn't, that doesn't like startle me by any means. Nobody from fourth to fifth grade, nobody, it was exactly the same number, 263. So I, you know, we'd need, we'd need better data, obviously, with the demographic study. Okay, anything else on that? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions, email them to Dr. Val Stracy or Mr. Pazin, and we'll try to work through this as best we can. Okay, item, what are we up to? Unfinished business, my favorite item that I have been able to do nothing about, other than keep it on the agenda.
I have just one item, I was looking at the minutes from our workshop meeting on IB, and I think this is sort of a key season for us to figure out, or for at least me personally as a board member, to figure out where I am with this decision as far as the budget moving forward and really committing, and there's a list of questions that were in the minutes from the workshop meeting, which I think are a good start. And I mentioned this at the meeting, but I would really ask that we try to receive a formal report, you know, that it's comprehensive and written out and referenced, you know, I mean, I like the discussions and the PowerPoints and stuff like that, but I feel like, you know, as we get into this level of decision-making, I would prefer to have a real sort of report from the...
I agree with that. We funded a partial staff position for that process for this year, I think that's fair to expect that.
So as comprehensive as they can be on, you know, what the details are in Guilford and what the other experiences are and references and, you know, whatever, you know, I'll try to read that, because I just feel like, you know, we'll have PowerPoints and presentations, but it's hard to get the hard stuff kind of in...
A formal report presentation?
That's personally what I would like to see.
And you're right, we have staff, and I will, I will assign that.
Okay, anything else? Media reports, Policy Committee, I assume you don't have anything else, you've been busy, obviously. Operations Committee, I did want to talk, have Ms. Renner talk a little bit about the presentation that you had in the Operations Committee tonight.
Yeah, we had a very informative presentation with a representative from Milliman. This is the firm that supports us with our matters related to our health insurance, and thanks to Jason for setting that up, it was really interesting. There were basically two areas that we discussed. One was our own plan and some of the drivers and cost trends in our own plan, and then the other was matters pertaining to the Affordable Care Act in general. As far as our own plan goes, very interesting, I mean, as you all know, this line item is about 18% of our budget, and last year, our budget season, we were hit with a... And last year, our budget season, we were hit with a large increase. So the more we can understand about it, the better. And some of the information we were given divides the claims activity into high-dollar incidents and non-high-dollar claims. So comparing 2014 to 2012, over two-year period, last year, those high-dollar events were 38 percent of the overall spending compared to 23 percent two years ago. So there's really been a striking increase in those relatively small number of claims. The non-high-dollar cost incidents actually went down in terms of total cost. So that was interesting. And one action that has been taken is that we reduced the level, the stock loss, the level at which regular, sort of, we're insured above that amount. We reduced that amount from 220, 250,000, 225,000, I'm sorry, to 150,000. So we expect that to have some significant effect this year. We're not, we asked for an approximation, and we're expecting to receive that. So that's pretty interesting. So overall, that, it was very informative to be able to dig into the numbers like this. We really appreciated that. And then we completed the conversation talking about, really about the CATALACT tax, which is a tax on expensive plants, something that's not an issue in other parts of the country, apparently, but our, our cost care is much higher. So this will be something that we'll have to deal with in 2018, as we plan going into 2018 with upcoming contracts and so on after the current round. And we have...
We have made it very clear to everybody that we do not intend to pay a tax on health care, so we're just gonna have to figure out a way to, to implement that. Obviously, a lot of employers are gonna have to deal with this in 2018, and we're one of them. And so, you know, it's gonna take some changes, but so be it.
And the consultant will be back in December for another meeting with us.
Yes, it's beginning.
Well, it sounds like your, the, your side, the administrative side and the board side is very pleased with this new consultant. This has been, yeah, this has been an area that has been a problem, an issue, shall we say, for, for years.
Last Friday, we had the first joint meeting with Town and BOE to begin talking about budgeting for this year moving forward. And we talked about putting health insurance out to bid to receive competitive suggestions and doing everything we can to make sure that we're getting the best service at the best price for this community. And they've been very responsive and very present in this school system through negotiations, now budget prep, meeting with you, the board. We've been very happy with their performance.
Terrific. All right, well, anything else on that? Okay, Building Committee, High School Building Committee update, is, are there any updates?
Meeting as we speak downstairs. We expect that they will approve the technology bid, as you did. That has, I believe we have a date for state approval later this month. The FF and E bids should be coming back shortly. We'll begin looking through those and making decisions there. And the work on site continues to move at pace. We've got, we've got drywall and paint going in, in areas already. It is very, very exciting.
Terrific. Good. Town Committee Liaison, has anybody got anything that needs to be reported? I want to just mention something, it's not under, it's not technically a committee, but Shore Publishing awarded, made some awards this week. I don't know if you saw that, but two people with, with deep connections to the Guilford Public Schools Community were given what are called Beacon Awards for their contributions to making the shoreline a place of opportunity, well-being, and safety. And not entirely a surprise at all, Kim Beckett was given an award for developing the Guilford's Unified Sports Program and the Positive Coaching Alliance Program. And Peter Palumbo, who we mentioned earlier, also received a Beacon Award for, in large part, his mentoring work through the high school and contributor to the food bank. And, and so I think we should just maybe...
And Guilford Day as well.
And Guilford Day as well. We may want to follow that up with a letter of congratulations. Strikes me as might not be an inappropriate thing to do. They both made tremendous contributions to the Guilford community.
Those are both very well deserved.
Okay, public questions, please? Oh, I'm sorry, you gotta, okay.
I've been very fascinated tonight with the discussion of class sizes. And I wanted to, I know that we talk a lot about averages, but I'd like to ask the administration, do we have, do we have a set, like, what is too small of a class and you will no longer offer it? Like, for example, say we no longer have students prepared to take AP Calculus BC. We have six, will you still offer it? At what number will you stop offering a class?
Now, the Board of Education has a regulation on that, and there is an exception built into those minimums in the cases of AP classes. When, when the requests for a class dwindle to a number that it appears that there's no longer a sustained interest in it, that would be an administrative decision at the building level. But we have class sizes this year that fall below the recommended, the board regulation and fall within to that exception. For instance, I believe AP French is an example of a class. I, off the top of my head, I think we're sitting about 11 students in that class, and the board minimum would be at 13, except for the exception for AP classes.
So for an AP class, for an extreme example, if you had one student, would you still offer it? I'm trying to understand this, this AP exception.
Likely no, likely we would not. And if we had sustained request in that ballpark, no. In those cases, often what happens is a class may then be offered every other year. Not every AP class is offered every year, so if interest annually isn't high enough, for instance, to seat 10 students in a class by offering it every other year, you may be able to continue to offer the opportunity, but not annually.
Okay. And then for a maximum? A hard maximum? Because, you know, we talk about averages, but...
Probably 30 or 31 students. I believe we had an AP math class last year that sat as high as 30. You would be looking at 30 or more as an upper limit for an AP class.
And what about for, at the middle school level?
Same.
So 28 in a math class is acceptable.
Is not unheard of, particularly in an accelerated class, yes.
Okay. And then I just, I just wanted to take that one, the discussion about the credits and just in the, these classes, I mean, you say that it's acceptable for 28, but it seems like, I'm a little concerned about, like, for the algebra. I would like to see that you, that you could seat a seventh-grade algebra class, and I think that you have enough seventh-grade algebra students that you should be able to seat an eighth-grade geometry class at the middle school. And I'd like for you to discuss that in your budget, rather than taking these students and busing them up to the high school.
Been done in the past, I appreciate the comment.
Okay. And just then, also, if you're going to be talking about the IB, I also wanted to make the comment that for that kind of, the IB sounds like a wonderful model, but I don't think you can pull it off with 30 kids in a class. I think you need to be able to have the staffing. And I would like to see the staffing for teachers more than more administrators or this, like, this, this sixth to eighth-grade math coach. I think that Guilford has had wonderful, professional, competent math teachers, and we could use some more so we don't have crowding in our classrooms rather than paying someone else to teach the teachers who already know how to teach math.
We added an additional math classroom teacher to Adams in the last budget cycle. As, in addition to bringing in a math coach, the year previous to that, we added an additional math teacher to Adams, specifically a teacher who was working with students who are in the accelerated class and classes at Adams. So again, I appreciate the comment, and that's a direction that we've gone.
Okay.
And there's always working towards the balance. I know that there is a limitation to discussing averages, but if you schedule for the classes that load at max, we are then gonna run into the position where our averages come way, way down. And while I will sit here and say that I'm proud of class averages district-wide that sit in the high teens and low twenties, I would have difficulty going out with a budget to this community where average class sizes had dropped far below that and saying that we're doing a good job of both being really fiscally responsible and meeting the needs of our students every single day so that every student experiences rigor in every class, every day. There is constantly the balance between fiscal credibility with your community and doing what you would choose to do with students if you had a blank check. And a school district is always in the position of doing the best that we can, and we work with all sorts of organizations like the District Management Council and the Connecticut Center for School Change.
All right, you gotta stop talking. We're about out of a disc here, so...
Okay, because we're out of a disc, if not for any other reason, okay.